Thank you. Happy New Year. Welcome to the Thursday's January nineteenth, twenty twenty-three, regular meeting of the Board of Ed of Math, of Mayopac Central School District. Can I get a motion to open the meeting?
So move.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Can we stand for the pledge of allegiance, please?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you for coming out tonight. Thank you for those at home watching. We have, as usual, a pretty, uh, pretty, uh, full, robust agenda. Um, and let's see, what is the first item here? I think I'm moving it over to you, Ms. Tonah.
Yes.
Okay, um, I'm going to have Ms. Tonah introduce our first presenters.
Thank you, President Zulo. Good evening, everyone. So this evening, we have the pleasure of having some students from our Mayopac Society, Mu Alpha Theta, and their advisors, Mayopac High School teachers Kelly Posh and Ed Turnchak. Um, so I'd like to invite you to the podium to share with us about your, uh, your organization.
There we go. Good evening. I'm Kelly Posh. We have Ed Turnchak. We are the advisors for Mu Alpha Theta Math Honor Society. We're here tonight with our cabinet, who's going to speak to, um, tell you guys a little bit about what we have done. And we're here also to request that we are added to the Appendix B. Um, so we are going to start with our president, Brett Ferguson.
Thank you, Ms. Posh and Mr. Turnchak. Without your support, this wouldn't be possible. And thank you for the board for allowing us to speak tonight. My name is Brett Ferguson. I'm president of Mu Alpha Theta, which is the National Math Honor Society for high school and two-year college students. Um, we're here today to show you what we do as a society. Um, so just a little bit about ourselves, we, our first inducted class at Mayopac was in twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen, and, um, we would like to be added to the Appendix B. Um, so one of the things we do is Math Night. One of the values of Mu Alpha Theta is developing a passion for mathematics, and we do this through Math Night. So pre-COVID, um, we would get the, all the schools together and do math games and math activities. Um, and the participation in Math Night helped connect the community and cultivate that love for math. Uh, we would love to be a part of bringing this back post-COVID. Some feedback from Mu Alpha Theta participants. I like that quote, "I liked that all ages and schools came together. It was fun to see old friends and teachers." I really liked how excited the kids were about participating in games. As the games are very engaging, the kids had so much fun doing that. And now our vice president, Monica Lazar.
We continue to cultivate a passion for mathematics in our community by participating in the MMS Steam Fair. This year, we are facilitating activities that will show how math is connected to the other areas of STEAM. Students will create their own test-lating shapes, use tools to engineer mandalas, and analyze the Fibonacci sequence as found in nature around Mayopac. Mu Alpha Theta members are required to complete peer tutoring hours after school by attending Algebra One Geometry or Algebra Two, um, Algebra Two Extra Help sessions or tutoring a student in the community individually. Students and teachers have found it really beneficial. And here's a quote from Ms. Megan Elliott, who's an Algebra One teacher, and she really likes this program. And now here is the treasurer, Monica Lily Jacobs.
So to expand more on our peer tutoring, students in Mu Alpha Theta are required to complete peer tutoring sessions for hours after school, and they can complete these hours by attending extra help sessions hosted by Algebra One Geometry, Algebra Two teachers. And pretty much how this works, um, the students will go to the extra help session, and they contend to students who may need help but are unable to get help from the teacher who might be unavailable. And they can also get their peer tutoring hours by tutoring a student in the community individually. We've received a lot of great feedback from this, and here are some quotes from students who have benefited from it. This student from Algebra One said, "I really like when the Honor Society students come in because it helps me to hear, hear it from someone else, and they are nice and easy to work with." And in another quote by a geometry student, they said, "It helps to have the Mu Alpha Theta students at extra help because if my teacher is working with someone, then I can ask them the question instead of having to wait." I'll now pass it on to our secretary, Nola Roberts.
Okay. Our future plans are to continue to participate in the Steam Fair, bring back Math Night, bring in guest speakers, expand our peer tutoring program, and fundraise to support math scholarships from Mayopac students. Thank you for the time and opportunity to share about our chapter.
Thank you all for presenting tonight, and thank you for your service and your peers in, um, your Honor Society for all that you do to help the students at Mayopac High School. And, um, we all look forward to seeing your tables at the Steam Fair on Saturday. So thank you all for being here. Um, you're welcome to go home and get ready for school tomorrow. We got some midterms and things, okay? So thanks for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the best part, the best part of these meetings is when the students come in and, uh, and, uh, anyway, they'll go home and study. And yes, you'll use math in your future. It all counts. Um, all right, so next, believe it or not, it's January, and we are starting to talk about the budget. So with that, I'm going to turn it over again to Superintendent Tonah and the interim superintendent of Business, uh, Ms. Christina Howe.
Thank you, President Zulo. Um, who has the clicker? Thank you, Mrs. Howe. She's going to move the presentation along for us. So, um, this evening, we're going to be talking about the budget development process, budget priorities, looking at enrollment, um, having a preliminary conversation about our tax levy limit, and looking at some cost drivers. So here you see the budget development process highlighted is January because that's where we are now with tonight's presentation, and you can see, um, what's coming up. So February's meeting is going to look at estimated revenue projections. March's meeting will have some presentations by our departments, transportation, facilities, and athletics. Uh, and April eighteenth is our, uh, budget adoption date. And prior to that, we're going to have all of our building principals attend and, uh, share with Board of Education, uh, some highlights in their buildings and, um, some new highlights for next year's budget as well. And then May fourth is our annual budget hearing, and the budget vote trustee election is on May sixteenth. So the budget priorities that I recommend to the Board of Education for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year are to maintain all academic programs and extracurricular activities. Expand upon the opportunities for our high school students through looking at some curriculum pathways. This will probably take us a few years for full implementation, but the high school is looking at the coursework that we currently offer. If there are any additional electives that could be, um, added so that students who have an interest in, in a specific area such as engineering or education or health field, they'd be able to, um, have courses, a course projection that would, uh, prepare them for, uh, beyond high school in those areas. Um, we talked about employer meetings, reorganizing our administrative team to continue to build stability in the district. So we looked at our special education structure, moving towards a director, an assistant director, and continuing with our, uh, two special education administrators, one in elementary and one in secondary, uh, looking at, uh, adding a director of technology. Um, and then that person would be also in charge of our data and would oversee our technology team, who does a terrific job. Having an administrator for safety, security, and compliance, and that individual would be responsible for communicating with all of our buildings, communicating with our BOCs representative that helps us make sure we have, uh, safety plans in place, as well as communicate with the, uh, sheriff's department because we have our SROs and SPOs, as well as our security guards from Briar that are here in the high school. So this individual will help coordinate our safety and, and just bring it even tighter. We're looking to have a dedicated elementary assistant principal in each of our three elementary schools. Currently, we have, uh, one assistant principal at Austin Road and one assistant principal that's shared between Fulmer Road and Lakeview. So we're looking to add a third so that each building has their own assistant principal to help with the administration of the building and help to keep our students safe. And then we're also looking at key cabinet roles such as our assistant superintendent for finance and operations. Mrs. Howe has been a wonderful addition this year, but she's an interim, and, um, she, she will not be able to continue beyond June thirtieth. So that's definitely a, a position that is, uh, key for the district. Another priority is to continue the district's bus replacement schedule. That's been in place for several years with brief hiatus during COVID. Uh, we have, uh, six buses that are new this year. Four have, uh, arrived, and we're waiting in the next couple of weeks for the next, the last two, and we'd like to be able to continue that as a separate referendum so that we can, uh, make sure that our buses are in a rotation basis, and we have safe vehicles on the road for our students. And finally, we want to balance the needs of our educational program with the fiscal needs of the community. It's very important. This Board of Education, uh, has had that as a priority in prior years. So this slide takes a look at our current enrollment of three thousand eight hundred fifteen. I think this is as of December. Uh, so you can see the breakdown by building and by grade level. And then if you look at the projected enrollment, where we took our kindergarten through a level grade students, moved them down to the next grade, and then made an estimate, a projection for our incoming kindergarteners, we've been told that the live birth rate for the, uh, kindergarten students that are entering for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year is high. It's projected to be high. So we did bump up those numbers a little bit. But even with bumping those numbers from twenty-two, twenty-three to the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, we're looking at a pro, an approximate decrease of students of about forty-one. And then this next slide looks at our elementary class sizes of this year and the number of sections, and then projecting for twenty-three, twenty-four. So this year, our kindergarten and first grades are no more than twenty students. Um, we go up to twenty-four in one particular grade level, uh, as an average class size at Fulmer Road at third grade, with seventy-six total sections across our K-five buildings for general ed and integrated co-teaching classes. So projecting for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, a slight bump up in enrollment at, uh, kindergarten level, but still maintaining seventy-six sections with the higher grades in the elementary with no more than twenty-four students. So it's important for us to maintain small class size, uh, because we, we value that opportunity for our students to have personalized edu, uh, instruction with their teachers. And now I'm going to ask Mrs. Howe to talk to us about the tax levy limit, which is an estimate at this time.
Thank you very much. Good evening, everyone. Um, as Ms. Tonah said, this is a estimate because we are expecting our state aid numbers. As you know, the governor had her say to the state address last week, and we expect those runs to be coming out next week. But we'll try to go quickly through this formula. The top half of the formula starts with the prior year's tax levy limit. That's the twenty-two, twenty-three, the current tax levy limit. To that, you have, um, you can add the prior year offset, which Mayopac didn't have. To that, you multiply the tax base growth factor. Mayopac's tax base growth factor is one point zero zero six one. That's actually down from last year, which was one point zero zero eight five. That's your brick and mortar, the growth in your community. You could see how that formula was applied. To that, you add the prior year's pilot, which is a payment in lieu of taxes. Mayopac does not have one, so the formula carries down. To that, you subtract your prior year's exemptions. This line, one million nine hundred and fifty-one thousand seventy-two dollars, is your mortgage. It's for any of the debt service that the district has for prior capital projects. So roof replacement, the bus replacement plan. Following down the formula, you get the adjusted prior year levy of ninety million eight hundred and thirty-eight thousand eighty-seven dollars. To that, you apply the CPI. That's the two percent tax cap. As everyone knows, you can see it when you go to the grocery store, CPI is well over eight percent. Um, and the cost of inflation has been certainly more than two percent this year, but because we're the school district, we're under the tax cap, that formula is multiplied by one point zero two. To that number, you add any coming year's payment in lieu of taxes, of which Mayopac has none. You carry that down. Again, there's no available carryover, and you get your tax levy limit. That number is ninety-two million six hundred and fifty-four thousand eight hundred and forty-nine dollars. Now, the next number is your coming year's mortgages. As you know, we have the fifty-three million dollar project, and we've borrowed some money. We've done what's called bond anticipation notes. We haven't secured the mortgage yet. We've done short-term borrowing because that's more financially beneficial to the district. When we do a short-term borrowing, you could do that for up to five years during the construction project, and you only pay the interest on that money. So that's a financial benefit to the district. So you could see that the coming year's debt is larger than the previous year. That number's in red because the debt has to be reduced by the state age you're going to get. And those are the numbers that we're waiting for. So we anticipate the number to be close to this two million seven hundred and forty-eight thousand four forty-eight, but we'll know that for sure once we get the state aid runs, hopefully next week. The next line is the coming year exemption for pension. Because our pension rates have not increased more than two percent for the retirement systems for all of district employees, there is no exemption for pension. That means that the district's maximum allowable tax levy limit is ninety-five million four hundred and three thousand two hundred and ninety-seven dollars. That's a three million, sorry, three million one hundred and seventy-six thousand seven hundred and twenty dollar increase over the prior year's levy, that first number at the top. That amounts to a three point four four percent levy to levy increase. Those are just very preliminary numbers. That's what the formula allows, that not to indicate that that's what the tax levy is going to be when the Board adopts the budget. That's just based on the formula, how high the tax levy could go, when you consider all these factors. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Howe. So the next slide here shows cost drivers for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year budget. So we have contractual salaries. Uh, two of our bargaining units will be in negotiations this spring. So, um, we do need to project salaries that we know of based on the bargaining, uh, units contracts that are in place. And then we also have BOC services. BOC services are very important for the operation of the school district. They have been informed us that they estimate a two percent increase for the next coming school year, and BOC services include our services through the RIC, which are our technical, uh, technology support services, special education, when we send students out to BOCs for special education programs, or we bring some support from BOCs, uh, itinerant teachers to, uh, support the students that, um, have special education accommodations that are attending our schools. And then our juniors and seniors at the high school, some of them participate in career and technical education, and that is programmed through BOCs. So all of those costs were estimating a two percent, uh, increase. Then we have employees' retirement system, our non-instructional, uh, staff members. The, uh, it will be, thirteen point one percent will be the cost for the district for twenty-three, twenty-four. We already have that information. Currently, this year, it's eleven point six percent, so that did go up. And teachers' retirement system, the employer contribution will be between nine and a half and ten percent for twenty-three, twenty-four, and, uh, that is down a little bit from ten point two nine percent. Our health insurance costs for our staff, uh, we're looking at average rate increase of about five and a half percent, which is not too bad considering what it has been in, um, prior years. We're looking at two percent increases for transportation costs as well as utility costs. And then we also have to take a look at the unfunded mandate that is, uh, associated with any mascot changes because we have a lot of signage throughout the district that, um, I'll speak a little bit about the mascot change later, but, um, if, if this comes to pass, we have, uh, two additional school years from this one to make all of those changes, but there's a significant cost involved. So preliminarily, looking at our revenue, we're waiting, as Mrs. Howe said, for our state aid run from the governor. That's the governor's proposal. Uh, we typically get that mid-January, so we'll do any day now. Um, that's just the first step in the budget process and state aid process uh, because then our state legislators meet and are supposed to adopt a budget by April first. And typically, they've made some changes to the governor's original proposal, and so we build a budget based on the governor's proposal, and then by the time the Board adopts the budget in late April, um, typically, the New York State Legislature has already provided us our final state aid runs. Then we have, uh, some federal grant monies that I'll talk about in the next couple of slides. And, um, that money is not part of our general fund. It is not something that the community votes on, but we're grateful to any grant monies that we receive because it does help us to, uh, fund some supplemental purchases and one-time purchases. Then we have New York State Foundation Aid, and so you may have heard a lot about that recently in the news because the governor has, um, pledged to make, uh, all of the districts whole this year. Our district was pretty close to being whole, uh, the past couple of years, and, um, so we don't anticipate that much of an increase based on Foundation Aid, but there are some other districts around the state that are looking for that gap to be, uh, fully funded this year. Uh, as Ms. Howe mentioned, the tax levy limit, CPI is capped at two percent, uh, but with exclusions and exemptions, uh, we're looking at a potential tax levy, that tax levy, uh, increase that can go no higher than about three point four percent. But again, we're waiting on final numbers to determine that, and then that'll be a conversation over the next few months with the Board of Education to decide where we actually land on that. Then we have tax sorceries, um, and that's an impact on revenue, not necessarily in a positive way. We do have, uh, some reservoirs within our district batteries, watershed that has been, um, in, under question by, uh, New York City. They get their water from our reservoirs here, and they have been paying, uh, taxes to the district for many years to, uh, get, get water for, for their residents. So there has been, uh, some challenges there by the city where they feel that they should not have to pay taxes on that, and if that should come to pass, that will be a decrease in revenue for the district and a potential for back revenue to the New York City, um, uh, government. So that's something that we're keeping a close eye on because that could definitely impact our budget in the near future. And then another revenue is our BOCs aid. We mentioned before about the increase that BOCs is looking to, um, or, uh, have us, uh, pay next year for approximately two percent. But based on what we used, uh, last year, we will get some aid back. Uh, typically, between fifty-three and sixty, sixty-three percent of all of our BOCs purchases, we get back an aid the following year. So that's definitely, uh, helpful to us and, um, is a big piece of our state aid runs. So this slide shows our annual federal grants. Um, the first four are from our consolidated title grant. So Title One, Part A, provides some money, a hundred, almost a hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars for academic achievement, but that can only be used at our Title One schools, and our Title One school is Lakeview Elementary. So basically, that money goes towards the salary of a reading teacher and the benefits associated with that salary. So, um, all of the consolidated title grants, they start on September first of each school year and expire on August thirty-first, and that's something we get annually. It could fluctuate the amount that the, that the state gives us. Um, it comes from federal money, but it passes through the State Education Department, and we find out in the summer how much money we get in each of those, uh, grant areas. So Title Two A is our, is for teacher and principal training. We get about sixty-two thousand dollars there. Title Three A is specific to our English Language Learner Program to provide materials, supplies, and supports for those students, and we get almost twenty-four thousand dollars there. And Title Four is for student support and academic enrichment. We get about eleven thousand dollars in that grant. The IDEA, six eleven and six nineteen, um, that is to support our education programs. So six eleven is for our students that are enrolled between grades K and twelve up to age twenty-one to support those programs. We get about nine hundred and forty-one thousand. And the six nineteen supports our preschool programs that, for students who, um, have, needs additional special accommodations, and we get about thirty-three thousand dollars there. So about one point two million dollars in annual federal grants, and again, that fluctuates each year. It depends on enrollment, uh, lots of factors that the State Education Department takes into consideration there. Then we have our one-time federal grants, and those are the, uh, American Recovery Plan Grants, um, the coronavirus relief grants. So you could see here, almost six million dollars in, um, federal money came through, and that was all because of the COVID pandemic. So we have spent about three point six million dollars of that, uh, to date. And, um, in February, at the next presentation, we'll provide some more details there. But, um, you can see the different funding sources. They're all separate grants. They all have to be written separately and submitted to the State Education Department. We take a look at how much we've spent and what was the original application for. Do we need to make any adjustments based on the monies, monies that are left, and what are the needs of the district? So the, our Homeless Two supports the needs of our homeless students. Um, Esther Three and C, uh, the Esther Two and the Gear Two, they all support wide ranges of allowable uses. So that could support salaries to provide additional support to our students, materials and supplies, equipment. Um, if we have a reading program that needs additional supports and supplies, we can purchase from, from this, as well as, uh, materials, supplies, equipment purchases to keep our buildings safe, uh, keep our students safe. Some of these grants were used for PPE when COVID was, uh, definitely, um, a, a high level of, of COVID rates, and we had all the closures, so things to, uh, maintain the cleanliness and health and safety of our students and staff, that those could be used through these grants. So you see the third, fourth, and fifth lines, um, SLR, Summer Enrichment. That's the state learning reserve where, um, we had to put a certain amount of money aside to support summer enrichment. So that grant has been spent already because we provided some summer, uh, enrichment for our students. The comprehensive is for after-school activities, and learning loss is for during the day to support any additional academic materials and supplies to, uh, close any of the learning gaps that our students have faced due to COVID. And then the last two on the bottom, just like I mentioned on the last slide, the six eleven and six nineteen are for our special education population, so we were awarded additional monies to support our students that are in the gen ed program as well, uh, I'm sorry, the special ed program during the day, uh, kindergarten through age twenty-one, and our preschool students. So again, five point nine million dollars. That's very helpful, but it is not part of the general fund. These are one-time payments. You can see all the way on the right that they're multi-year grants. So, um, some of them sunset on September thirtieth of twenty twenty-three, so we're finishing up our spend. up our spending plan this year and the summer. And then the balance of them expire in September of twenty-twenty-four. So we're definitely making sure that our plans are looked at often so that we can spend all of these funds before they expire. So next steps. So you can see the dates of our February and March presentations, the sixteenth of each of those months, April eighteenth is budget adoption, May fourth, the budget hearing. And then throughout the month of May, I'll be scheduling various presentations with community organizations to make sure that they're aware of the budget. And then on May sixteenth is our budget vote and trustee election. And then should anyone in the community be away on May sixteenth, and they know that in advance, they could apply for an absentee ballot, and the information on how to do that is on this slide. This presentation is already up on our website as well. Absentee ballots must be received by our district clerk related to five P M. on May sixteen. And nominating petitions, there will be three vacancies to fill on the Board of Education. So you could see the seats that are up and how one could pick up a petition and become a candidate on the Board of Education ballot for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year and three years in total. And so that's this month's budget presentation.
Thank you very much. I just want to commend Superintendent Tona and the interim Assistant Superintendent Howe on a thorough layout of what's happening. This is only January, and if you paid attention to what was going to happen in the next in the next few months, it's going to be building on this this presentation, and it'll get more and more detail. So I urge people to pay attention because what sometimes happens is people don't pay attention until, you know, rent me for the vote. But you're going to, I anticipate the most thorough review of the budget in in recent history, let's put it that way, right? The numbers, you know, the economy is struggling, and we're very sensitive on the board about that, and we're going to make the right decision for the students of the community. But I just want to commend all the hard work. I mean, it's a few slides here, but I know there's hours and hours of work that went into this, so I just want to commend Christina and Christine for their work.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, so what's next is the comments on agenda items. We have two folks. I just want to remind all the speakers now and later at the end to be mindful of the three-minute limitation, three oh five, I'm not going to protect the gavel, but you know, just be mindful. So let's ask, I ask Candace Dejean.
Dejean.
All right.
So again, I'm a public speaker, even in this small group of people, so forgive me if I falter at all. I would like to start by thanking the administration, the Board of Education members, the librarians, and anyone else who has worked on the issue of book banning and creating a more and a more than fair policy to address the issue. If a parent does not want their child to read a specific library book, they can simply call the school and tell them they do not want their child to read it. Seems like a simple solution that should end this ridiculous and costly process. This is not enough for some members of the community. Apparently, some members of the community want to continue to waste invaluable man-hours and flush our much-needed tax dollars down the toilet to continue this ridiculous pursuit. That being said, there are three issues with a continued request to review books despite an existing, simple, and effective policy. One, to reiterate, book banning is not something that should be happening in modern-day America and represents the silencing of voices different from your own and an attempt to destroy the many different worlds and viewpoints that live inside of books. If you don't like a certain book, as a parent, you're welcome, you're well within your rights to tell your child not to read them. Two, it occurred to me that there may be a significant cost associated with the request for book banning. I asked the board to provide me with the cost to date. This process has frivolously drained twenty-three thousand five hundred and fifty-four tax dollars. Let me say that again, twenty-three thousand five hundred and fifty-four tax dollars and wasted four hundred and forty-six point five administrative work hours. I think that most community members would agree that this is a tremendous waste of time and money that could be much better spent elsewhere. We already have a policy. We already have a tight budget where the money, where there is money, where is the money coming from to cover these additional costs? What are we losing behind this blatant ignorance? The books that are being targeted are overwhelmingly about the experiences of people of color and members of the L G D T B Q community and represent an attempt to silence these voices in our own community. We should love thy neighbor and work towards a betterment of our community, not trying to create villains and a fear of the other. It is my hope that the opt-out option will be enough to stop the insanity and bleeding of our precious time and tax dollars, all twenty-three thousand five hundred and fifty-four of them, and continuously count it. Thank you.
Thank you, Candace. Next is Jerome Mitchell.
It's on that. Okay, great. A period of statement. I want to thank the board for choosing a path of free speech, information, intelligence when it comes to the issue of access to literature. So the books, the books being voted on today are Stamped, Dear Martin, and All American Boys. The common narrative within these books are inequality, discrimination, and the policing within black communities. Narratives are important. Everyone has one. It frames their personality and their perspective. I submit to you that the best way to understand someone's perspective is to know their narrative. My grandfather was one of the first black police officers in a small town I grew up in New Jersey. My father was a police officer. My uncle was a police officer. Much to their disappointment, I became a lawyer, but that's another story. I have nothing but respect and appreciation for the men and women of law enforcement that protect us. Now, despite my father being a police officer, we had the talk. This talk is common to most black parents. This talk consists of what one should do during an encounter with the police. Although I have not spoken with every non-person of color in the United States, those that I have spoken with are not familiar with the talk, nor have they ever had to have the talk with their children. That's their narrative. The last time I stood here, I spoke about how book banning in schools is detrimental to the development of critical thinking skills and the promotion of a free and open society. I also spoke about how it is important for students to have access to literature for marginalized groups because it promotes understanding, compassion, and empathy. I've always liked the word empathy, the ability to understand and share the feelings of others. Unfortunately, this word is consistently absent in most discussions regarding the treatment of people of color in this country. The narrative within these books are not to undermine the men and women who protect us. It's not some anti-American agenda. Their narratives, these narratives are the everyday narratives of people of color when they encounter different things in their communities and should be shared with all Americans because the issues raised in these narratives cannot be fixed by people of color alone. It's going to take all of us. So to those who raise the issue with these books, I say to you, it's not too late to become an empathetic person. Take the time to learn about others, teach your children about others, and don't allow them to make the mistakes of the past. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We will have, I think, a couple other people speaking at the end. All right, so now we're going to move to the financial section of our agenda. We're going to look at the reports. I've said this many times. These reports are details of every, the transactions of the district. I urge you, if you are just in our finances, to read these. They're not necessarily the easiest pieces of information to read, but they're there for public record, and they are, there's a couple of these reports that include every single check that goes out so you can see where the money goes and actually where the money comes from. So with that, I'd like, we're going to go through the motion to accept these additional reports. I'm going to go one by one, I'm going to go one by one just to keep it clear. So can I get a motion to accept the treasure report of November twenty-twenty-two?
So moved.
Second, please.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to accept warrants of November twenty-twenty-two?
So moved.
Second, please.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to accept revenue reports for November twenty-twenty-two?
So moved.
Second, please.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to accept budget transfers November twenty-twenty-two?
So moved.
Second, please.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to accept claims audit report of November twenty-twenty-two?
So moved.
Second, please.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to accept work session. And now we're going to the minutes. We're going to accept the minutes of the last two meetings we had in December. Works, so motion to accept work session minutes of December twentieth, twenty-twenty-two?
So moved.
Second, please.
Second.
Any questions? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
And one abstained, okay, from Lucy, she wasn't here. Motion to accept regular minutes of December twenty-second, twenty-twenty-two. Motion to accept, please.
So, so moved.
Okay, so moved second. All in favor?
Aye.
And one abstained, I went abstention by, or Lucy, or Miss Massa, or excuse me. Okay, thank you very much. With that, we turn it back. She's had a glass of water here, drink of water after her presentation with the Superintendent Report, Superintendent Tona.
Thank you, President Tolo. So again, it was wonderful to have our high school students here from the Math Honor Society, who Alpha Theta, several months ago, right in this room, the newest members of their honor society were inducted, and it's wonderful to hear about how they give back to their peers in the high school and provide support for them. So for those of you that have elementary and middle school students, remember that there is peer tutoring available when your children get to high school, and it's okay to ask for that, and hopefully some of your students will also be part of that honor society in the future and can give back to other students in the high school as well. And as mentioned, the Steve Fair is this Saturday from nine A M. to one P M. at middle school. So I hope everyone can come out and take a look at the projects that the students have put together. They'll be judging on Saturday. It really is a full district effort. Tomorrow, our fifth graders are heading up to the middle school to get a sneak peek at the Steve Fair so that they can learn about what they will be responsible for doing when they get to middle school. And then our high school students serve as mentors for the middle school students as they put together their projects. And last night, the music department just doesn't cease to amaze me. And, you know, as as a newbie here in a pack, I put things on my calendar, and I really don't know what to expect until I get here. And in this room last night, each of our high school musical ensembles that meet during the day performed, and they they were amazing. This was a packed house. And then after listening to each of those musical groups, we went down to the gym, and it was decorated with student artwork. Our jazz band was phenomenal, performed, and the Friends of Music put on an amazing spread for all of the attendees. So it was truly a wonderful night. So next year, when you hear about the Pops concert, make sure you come by. It was it was really phenomenal. So thank you to all of our music teachers and all of our students for the time that they put into providing us with a lot of entertainment. That was absolutely wonderful. So you may have heard, on Tuesday, I presented a plan for looking at our mascot. I'm not going to go through that plan again this evening, however, tomorrow in the newsletter, I have a letter to the community outlining the whole process along with a link to the presentation, which is also already online in Board Docs, but that will be available on the website tomorrow as well. So the New York State Education Department, they've recently prohibited the use of indigenous names, mascots, and logos by public schools. And I'm new here, and I, in the short amount of time that I've been here in this district, I recognize the passion that this community has for for the district and for, in some cases, for the mascot, for the logo, and just the pride that is evident. So we definitely want to continue that pride, and we don't want to lose state aid. That's an important amount of money that helps our district operate. And without, with any loss of state aid, that would be a huge, difficult situation for the rest of the community to be in. So we have to create a plan, and this plan has to be in place by June thirtieth and adopted by the Board of Education with full implementation by June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five. So we have two additional years because it will cost us some money and some time to make the changes. Because if you look around the district while you see a different logo than what originally was in place, if if we have to change that logo, that's going to be a huge undertaking. So what I proposed was to have a district committee formed with community members as well as students. And in tomorrow's newsletter, there'll be a link for those in the community that are interested in participating, so I encourage you to complete that. I'll be reaching out to our PTOs and our SEPTO and MSA, our staff members at each of our bargaining units in the in the district and asking them for representatives. But then this survey is a way for our alumni and other members of the community to be part of the process. So I anticipate this mascot selection committee find, coming up with several alternative mascot ideas. It won't happen in one meeting, so they can go back and talk to people in the community and get ideas and bring them back, and we'll narrow that down and then put the decision preliminarily in the hands of our students, K-12, where they'll all have an opportunity to vote on a narrowed field of of choices that the committee comes up with. And then presenting that information to the Board of Education on May eighteenth for potential adoption by the board. And then once that's determined, we could take a look at the logo. So the State Education Department has opened a public comment period, and that runs through February twenty-eighth, and that information is in the letter tomorrow as well. It will be on the website with who you can, the person that you can contact. Her name is Christina Coughlin. She's the Assistant Commissioner of the New York State Education Department. The address is there, her phone number, as well as an email address of R E G comments, R E G C O M N T S at N Y S E D dot gov. And they are inviting the public to provide data, views, or arguments related to the regulation on the mascot. Once that public information period ends on February twenty-eighth, then the Board of Regents is going to need some time in April, and they're supposed to go through all of these public comments and then provide us with more specific guidance because we would still like to use our logo if possible. We feel that it does give a nod to the Native Americans that were here long before we were. And if that's possible, that we could keep the logo, I think that's the direction we hope to go in. So that is an update on the mascot. I know that for some people, it's a it's a difficult, difficult concept to to have to face. And I apologize that we're in this position, but unfortunately, it's it's out of our hands. I will be reaching out to the I will be reaching out to the Native American tribes that are within New York State and getting their input. But I've heard from one tribe that unsolicited, they just emailed me, and they did not support our using an indigenous mascot. So the last thing I want to say in my report is good luck to our varsity cheer team. They left this afternoon. They had, I went to visit them in the gym at the fall school. They had their luggage in hand. They were heading to the airport. They were flying to Dallas, Texas for a national competition. So we wish them well, and we look forward to learning that they do very well there. And perhaps we'll have them at a future meeting.
Absolutely. I'm just going to add, I can add two things really quick. One, I was also at the Pops concert, and they're just, they're just, the music department needs to get more publicity. So I promised, I forgot who I spoke to, one of the teachers, like, right here, that I would actually, would present some of the dates in the future. It is online, it's on the website. So February first, twenty twenty-three, there's a small ensemble concert. February eighth, there is the District String Festival. February ninth, the District Chorus Festival. March eighth is Bandarama. So if you're not even tweeting with interest by Bandarama.
All the schools.
All right, so I, I may not be at all of these, but I will tell you, it, it was amazing. And the little week, it kind of wound down and you're tired. Take a ten minute, well, ten minute drive, you sit in the back, and it's just amazing. It's just amazing. It's a jewel. It's a jewel, and we need to, and you don't have to. The parents are there watching their kids, but you don't have to. And I just also want to have a shout out to one of the sons of our board member, Joaquin Martin, Martinez, excuse me, idiot I am, and he was terrific. So, so Dad, Dad's providing some support there. Fernando's providing support for his son. He was actually terrific, and he was in the jazz band and a bunch of other places as well. The other thing I just want to make real quick with the, with the mascot, it is a sensitive issue. And I'm not going to add more than what Superintendent Tona said. We're going to do this the right way. We're going to include as many people as possible. We're going to listen to everybody. The bottom line is that we are not going to risk state aid. It's just a significant amount of money. We cannot run the school district. We can't run the schools without that state aid. So, but we're going to, we're going to do the right thing. I, I promise you that. We will look at this thoroughly. The board went there. I'm very proud of this board, in the past and now, as we look at these issues as thoroughly as possible. So I promise you we'll do that, and we're going to include it. If you want to be included, or your kids want to be included, Ms. Tona has, has a plan. It sounds like a ton of people, but we've got a, she has a great plan on how to do that. And we're going to turn this, what a potential obstacle, into an opportunity. So stay tuned, and we'll keep you informed.
And if I could just say one other item I forgot today. I spoke to Assemblyman Matt Slater. He reached out to me, and we talked a little bit about the mascot issue. And he asked how we can help, and I did ask him if there's any advocacy work that he can do for the unfunded mandate, for any expenses that the district will have to incur based on any mascot or logo change. So I appreciate his reaching out.
Okay, so we send the magic word to advocacy, and we're going to talk about that in a little bit, too. So with that, thank you, Superintendent Tona. We're going to move on to our board committee reports. We did have, I think every single committee met, so I'm going to start. Pause it, yeah. Let's start with the HR committee. So Vice President Savino, want to take us through that? I know most of it is executive session, but whatever you have to share with us. I think it works now. We're good. So the HR committee met on January tenth at five forty-five. President was myself, Trustees Martinez and Masahara, Assistant Superintendent for HR, Miss Lagoado, and Superintendent Tona. As President Tulu mentioned, we did discuss the HR agenda, which is on tonight's Board Docs. And we discussed some of the business office openings, such as the superintendent, Assistant Superintendent search, and how that process will lay out. We adjourned at about seven o'clock, and that is all I have. Thank you. All right, thank you, Vice President Savino. Next is the Facilities Committee, so Mr. Farrell, do you want to take us through that?
Sure. We also met on the tenth prior to the HR meeting. In attendance were Trustees Martinez, Martin, Savino, and myself. We met with staff, Ms. Tona and Ms. Howe, as well as Chris Walsh, Tim Walsh, excuse me, sorry. We got an update on capital. We, we met down at the fall school. We also got the review. We're in the process of moving our offices, our administrative offices, from the Administration Building in anticipation of the sale of that to the fall school. So the, the staff here in general is doing that work themselves, which is great, saving the district a lot of money. It's a, it's a really, pretty talented group of, of individuals here who work in the district. They're really, really superstars, and they're putting together offices little by little. We're starting to, to lower, so it won't be a major transition. I mean, a nice little calm transition. We're able to walk through the fall school and see some of the work they're doing. Really, it's very impressive. We've got great staff, and they're well done. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next is the Finance, the Finance Committee, Jonathan, Trustee Schneider, you want to take us through that, please?
Sure thing. Finance Committee met on January twelfth at six PM at the District Office. The members present were myself, Trustee Masahara, Trustee Savino, and President Tulu, as well as Superintendent Tona and Interim Assistant Superintendent Business Howe. There were no others present at the time. We began the meeting by reviewing the grants. We reviewed the federal grants as well as the one-time federal grants that were through COVID. Those were also reviewed tonight in the budget. And going forward, what we are going to have is the Superintendent and Interim Superintendent Business preparing a plan of action for the spend down on the remaining COVID grants that were awarded to the district. There is a report detached that has the awarded amounts, the amounts that were spent, and the amounts that were re, that are still remaining on the balance through the November thirtieth date. We then had talked about November financial reports, which we had received a little late, so we reviewed those. And the board had done the final reviews for approvals tonight. Updates from previous meetings, we were in discussion on the school district own property, and we are still awaiting appraisal, appropriate discussion. Then we reviewed the budget presentation, where we had downloaded this presentation that we seen tonight, as well as the one that was on Tuesday, presented here, and both the Superintendent and Interim Superintendent Business. We'll continue to develop that presentation through the budget cycle, which will be added tonight. There are no additional items that were added for the next meeting's agenda. We close the meeting at seven forty PM, and our next meeting will be on February ninth at six PM at the District Office.
Thank you, Jonathan. Thank you. All right, Trustee McCracken will give us the rundown on the ad hoc advocacy committee, which will give us those details.
Yeah, so it wasn't an official meeting, so we don't have minutes for it. It was more of a, a training session for the, the members of the ad hoc advocacy committee to learn how to navigate state legislation up in Albany in the two houses of the State Legislature. So it was an NYSenate.gov training, about an hour session. We have the video of it, which we will probably look to put on the committee website. So any citizen in the community can use it to engage with state policy affecting education. But honestly, if you learn the training, it can be used for any type of legislation. But we focused in on education and how to research that legislation, see what certain bills do, see if it has a chance of passing, how to advocate for it. So it was a good session, not an official meeting. Our next official meeting will be next week, Thursday at seven PM in the Falls PD Room. There's no opportunity for participation yet, but on the agenda, we're going to be talking about ways to take input from the community, so we make sure that the priorities that is driving our advocacy doesn't just come from the committee, but we're using our committee members as, what's the word I want to use? Ambassadors of the community going out and collecting input. So that will be on the agenda, and I'll obviously, in our next report, announce how any community member can get engaged in our process. We're very excited to get started. So this is, this is the report.
Thank you, Trustee McCracken. I just want to, I was lucky enough to chair the committee last year with, with Trustee McCracken. It is critically important to have your voice heard, and this is a way, using this advocacy committee, to sort of funnel all the ideas of the community through these folks on the committee. It's really important, and now we have a whole set of new politicians that were newly elected. We just heard that the Assemblyman Slater reached, had a conversation. They need to pay attention to us because they're just, we have a new congressman. We have a new, new everything, right? I think everybody's new. So here's an opportunity to, for us to do that. And with our man in Albany, Trustee McCracken, we have an opportunity to, to, to use his expertise to, to funnel this, this energy through this, and I think it's a great opportunity, and I know they're going to do great things. Yeah, though, but he's going to do it well. It's the focus of one or two issues, because you can't just carpet bomb them, whatever. You gotta be very focused, but I, I will try to be there at the next meeting. It's next, what's the date?
Twenty-sixth.
All right, twenty-sixth.
Twenty, twenty-sixth, next Thursday.
All right, thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to new business. So here is the three books that are, were presented. I'm going to read the resolution. I apologize, we're required, required to read all of them separately. So I'll read this, and then I'm going to ask for a motion to approve, and then we're going to go this way to approve, approve or not approve, so it's a yes or no, a and a on the motion to approve, okay? Dear Martin, whereas the book, Dear Martin by Nick Stone, is deemed a challenged book, and is currently included in the eighth grade reads section of the middle school library in a general circulation at the high school. Whereas placement of the book in the middle school was challenged on December sixteen, twenty twenty-one. Whereas a district curriculum book committee convened, reviewed, and provided a recommendation to the Superintendent of Schools on November fourteenth, twenty twenty-two. Resolved upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, the book Dear Martin will remain in the eighth grade read section of the middle school library. Be it further resolved upon recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, the Board of Education approves the process of the Superintendent of Schools, providing that a parent of any student that does not wish for their student to borrow this or any book may notify the building principal or librarian in writing, and an alert will be placed on the student's account to notify the librarian during book checkout. Can I get a motion to approve, please?
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Any questions?
I was just going to explain my vote before I do.
Yeah, well, you're first.
Yeah, so I'm going to abstain because I believe in the spirit of education, but also parental rights. And I did, obviously advocated for a motion to have a process where all the challenged books require parental permission before they're taken out, not forcing parents to deem each book what they don't want to be reviewed by their students. So I'm going to abstain because I don't believe we should be removing the books, but I obviously advocated for further protections. There's not enough votes to have that, so I'm going to abstain. That's going to be my vote.
Okay, thank you, Trustee McCracken. All right, Fernando?
Yeah. Yes.
Okay.
I'm going to support the motion. Yes.
I vote yes.
Yes. So I just want to talk a little bit about this. So I'm going to say no, and the reason I'm saying that is I read through these books, and I understand how this is a sensitive topic, and I am not a book banning. And the committee recommended all these books to stay in the schools. I feel the anti-police content, topical matters, and terminology in the books do not belong in a school, but in a local library. When parents send their children to school, they trust us to educate their children and protect them all. Thank you.
Thank you, Lucy. Don't ban books, just ask for parents' permission.
No.
Okay. Melody, do we have?
Motion carries.
Okay. Thank you. Whereas, okay, so the next one is All American Boys. Okay, bear with me here. Whereas the book All American Boys by Jason Reynolds and Brendan Kylie is deemed a challenged book, and it's currently in general circulation at the middle school and the high school libraries. Whereas placement of the book in the middle school was challenged on December sixteen, twenty twenty-one. Whereas a district curriculum book committee convened, reviewed, and provided a recommendation to the Superintendent of Schools on November fourteen, twenty twenty-two. Be it resolved upon recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, the Board of Education hereby approves that the book All American Boys by Jason Reynolds and Brendan Kylie remain in circulation in the Mayack Middle School Library and placed in the eighth grade reads section. Be it further resolved upon recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, the Board of Education approves the process of the Superintendent of Schools, providing that a parent of any student that does not wish for their student to borrow this or any book may notify the building principal or librarian in writing, and an alert will be placed on the student's account to notify the librarian during book checkout. So can I get a motion to approve, please?
So moved.
Second? Second, anybody second? Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, thank you. Any questions?
Are we going to vote on this?
Yeah, yeah, I'm going to do it. All right.
Vote, vote, we'll start.
Abstain, okay.
Yes.
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 No.
Say no.
Okay. All right, motion carries, okay. All right, the last one. Whereas the book stamped by Jason Reynolds is deemed a challenged book and is available in its general circulation of the middle school and high school libraries. Whereas placement of the book in the middle school and high school was challenged on December sixteen, twenty twenty-one. Whereas a district curriculum book committee convened, reviewed, and provided a recommendation to the Superintendent of Schools on January twelfth, twenty twenty-three. Resolved upon recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, the Board of Education hereby approves that the book stamped by Jason Reynolds not be removed from the high school library and copies placed in the eighth grade read section of the middle school library. Be it further resolved upon recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, the Board of Education approves the process of the Superintendent of Schools, providing that a parent of any student that does not wish for their student to borrow this or any book may notify the building principal or librarian in writing, and an alert will be placed on the student's account to notify the librarian during book checkout. Okay, motion to approve?
So moved.
Second, please.
Second.
Any questions? Trustee McCracken, you want to start us? Abstain, okay.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Oh, sorry, sorry.
I support the motion, yes.
Yes.
No.
No.
Motion carries, okay. All right, thank you very much. Appreciate everybody walking through that. All right, now, we get to approve the consent agenda. Again, the purpose of the consent agenda is to do routine business. Again, I urge folks to go through this because there is a lot of activity in there, and you can see the, the results of the work of the, of the, of HR committee is in here in terms of hires and appointments and things like that. There's also special agent reports, and we are retiring some equipment. But again, I encourage you to go through that. So can I get a motion to appro, approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second? All right, second, second. Somebody discuss that. All right, John, thank you, Jonathan. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, excellent. All right, now we are residents' comments. So Ms. LaRocque, do we have any residents' comments?
Ah, yes, Marie Frankel.
All right, before, Marie, why don't you start walking up? I'm just going to do a couple of notes here. So before we open it up, just remember that the public comment period will not exceed thirty minutes. I'm not sure we have any speakers. We all, we, the policy is one-five, one-two in respect. Here's a couple bullet points. Respect, it took three minutes time when they don't allow it, ladies. Address myself and the board. Obviously, we look for civility and decorum, which I know everybody will do. You're not allowed to use obscene language, obviously. And I'll just read this. Libelous statements, threats of violence, statements advocacy advocating racial, religious, or other forms of prejudice will not be tolerated. Comments and questions should be made in respect of the matter. And I, I, as the board president, will cut off the comments. And I, I as the board president will cut off comments deemed to be derogatory, inflammatory, inappropriate, of harm's order. Personal tax or criticism of any person connected with the district will not be permitted. All right, go ahead, Ms. Marie.
Hi, uh, thank you for letting me speak this evening. Um, I had a few quick ones before I talk about the budget. In your, whatever that general approval that you do, there was a, a meal changing, a meal charge, whatever. And I just thought it was odd that it's called meal changing. Meal charge and prohibition against meal shaving policy, unlike, I think that's, it was just like a meal, it was a meal charge policy before. I'm not sure why people would refer to meal shame. Two of the items that were in the equipment, it says no longer used. It doesn't say that they're broken or anything. And I did look, and they, there may be values for them. So I don't know if we've tried to, I'm sorry.
No, sorry, okay. So I don't know if there is some value for those. I mean, one of them was sixty-seven fifty, and I looked on the internet. Another was thirty-four fifty, the mixer. So I don't know, before we just toss them, maybe we should look into that. Okay, so for the budget, I took a look at the updated historical enrollment decline from two thousand twelve to, to the projected two thousand twenty-four. It's almost twenty-five percent. The tax increases that I'm showing just from two thousand seventeen to twenty-three are ten percent. I, I really don't understand the mathematics of that. With a twenty-five percent smaller population, we should be considering like lower costs, not just constant increases. A recent article from the Wall Street Journal said, public schools in the U S lost more than one point four million students since the start of the pandemic, prompting some schools, districts to close buildings because they do not have enough students or funding. They say it's due to declining birth rates, homeschooling, competition from private and charter schools. Have we studied the reason for our decline? Could we function effectively with fewer schools? Also, regarding the budget, I just took a look. I had printed out just from the website, a, you know, some cost-saving policies. It was like a fifteen or sixteen page thing from a state college. Some things to always consider are solicit cost savings, cost savings from district staff members, the community, as, and perhaps offers incentives for implemented savings. Savings are where you find them, look all the time. You may have to overcome culture and politics to get savings. Bid and purchasing of all services, including fuel, electricity. The board mentioned they're joining some kind of buying cooperative. There's always more negotiating power with larger numbers, so hopefully that's going to help. Zero-based budgeting instead of justification, for justification, annual review and justification of positions, not just five percent on top of what we have. Start from zero and build up. Possibly try outsourcing custodial services, maybe in one test building. Review procedures and protocols for duplicity, redundancy. Strive to create efficiency. Remember, the job expands to fit the time. Another thing that I've always spoken about is transportation. The New York State Education website has a section on pupil transportation. That's a very detailed, three-page guideline about pupil transportation economics and efficient practices. Has the school, has the Mayapack School District considered these practices? Multiple tripping of buses, cooperative transportation, full utilization of buses. Prepare a study if outsourcing of transportation would be more cost-effective and efficient than running it in-house. We are in the primary business of education on transportation. Buses sit idle when school is out. The Mayapack School District should perform an evaluation to determine if it, if the Mayapack School District best interest is in the transportation business, especially when you're asking us to consider more spending this year after a million one sixty in two thousand twenty-three, in addition to eight eighty-three five hundred in two thousand twenty-two. Okay. And there's also significant costs lifts for maintenance and buses. And maybe we should evaluate sharing maintenance facilities with other bus facilities. So I'm basically just asking you to please, please, please. You know, we can't just keep costs going up. You know, population's going down, and there has to be a cut.
Thank you. I, I think. Okay, who's, who's next?
Sean McGermin.
Oh, but Mr. President, that policy, that should change the number of the policy, correct? On the consent agenda?
The, the meal policy includes some language changes that are in line with the State Education Department, what, what they told us we have to have. They're minor language changes. Basically, it memorializes what we currently do for students. So we make sure that if a student does not have money that particular day to purchase their meal, we make sure that they get fed that day. So that's the, the spirit of the policy.
Thank you, Superintendent Thomas. Thank you, thank you. So did you, that was the answer to your question?
Right, I understand, but it's ridiculous to talk about the meal shaving. I mean, it's kids that don't have the money. We understand that. We should help them. There's, there's federal aid, there's state aid. But to write, write a policy that's called, you know, shame, you know, to prevent student shaming, not shaming students, it's just ridiculous.
That was passed down directly from the state.
Okay, all right, go ahead.
Oh, there we go. All right, I want to thank the school board for allowing me to speak last month and this month, too. And I'd like to thank my fellow veterans for coming here and supporting myself. Local residents, there we go. I request on the school board to put to a vote, matching the veteran exemption that the town provides veterans on property tax on our school tax.
I made a mistake.
That's back. All right, so.
You want to just give more of a?
I'll try to hold it. Okay, try that again. All right, so I, I think you know why I'm here. I think you know what we're asking for. I made a mistake last month. I attempted to paraphrase math. And President DeLulo, you hope I'm pronouncing that properly. As I sat down, you said, I'm unsure of the math. And the point is, it's not my math. In fact, it's the interim superintendent of business, Hal, and that math was derived from the town of Carmel's assessor, Greg DeRose. So I, I won't do any math today. I will do numbers. So one number for you is three. That's the number. It gets me upset when I think about it because my son had to go to three different high schools. Three different high schools because of my twenty-seven years of military service. But he graduated from Mayapack High School, and he's doing fantastic. Very, very proud of my son. It's gorgeous. Another number for you, one sixty-one. Christmas gift. The same son gave me this, so it's going up on a telephone pole near you. But that's a hundred and sixty-one. I can tell you, those hundred and sixty-one, many of the people on telephone poles are not alive. They're not with us. So we're talking about a very small population of people in this town. It's at a V F W. meeting just now. We just left the V F W. meeting. On seventeen January, the V A. changed veterans in a suicidal crisis can go to any V A. or non-V A. health care facility for free emergency health care. That's, that's new. This is two days ago. Why did they do that? Two thousand thirteen, twenty-two veterans took their lives each day. Twenty twenty-two, forty-four a day. Got one more number, and then I'm going to sit down. At our veterans meeting tonight, it was a number ninety-six. That's the age of our World War Two veteran, Jimmy T. Polisi. That guy had the courage to lie about his age and go serve in World War Two. Are you going to make him wait? Or are you guys going to exercise that kind of courage and put this to the vote to help the veterans of our community? Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you, sir.
I think that's it, ready?
Christopher Harrigan.
All right.
How you doing? I just wanted to ask the board how maybe we could add something to future agenda. And I wanted to share my concerns regarding the COVID-nineteen shot being required for school attendance in the upcoming future. And I wanted to just say that if the shot is required, I will pull my son from Mayapack Schools, be forced to move out of the state or seek alternative education arrangements. And I know I'm not the only parent in this position, so this is a deeply concerning issue for us. And it's not out of nowhere. Recently, the C D C. added the COVID-nineteen vaccine to the schedule of recommended childhood vaccinations, and that leading to concerns that this will become legislated to receive an education in all of New York State schools. It's not a long shot considering the SUNY school mandate for the COVID vaccine. So last year, both the Assembly and the House, Assembly and the Senate introduced bills that would mandate the COVID-nineteen shot for all New York State students. Those bills have lapsed, but there's a strong possibility that they may be refiled this year. And many families are deeply concerned about this. Try it again? There you go. There we go. So. All right, so we're worried that these bills might be refiled this year, this upcoming year. It's clear that these shots only provide protection to the people receiving them. They don't protect the surrounding community like previous compulsory vaccines that are effective in stopping with infection and transmission. Given the risk benefit profile of these shots, this choice should only be between a family and their health care provider. I did pull some, I can email these as well, but we had a FOIL request on last year, December fifth of last year. So according to the Department of Health Department, ninety-eight percent of five to eleven-year-olds and ninety-six percent of twelve to seventeen-year-olds would be considered unvaccinated or not up to date on the COVID shots. So this isn't a small minority. This is almost one hundred percent. This would leave an enormous number of families faced with very difficult decisions about their child's education. So what I'm asking of the district here, last month, we had five school districts across New York State formally draft a letter to the governor stating, like, like we did last year with the mask mandate, that we want to retain autonomy with this decision. That number's grown to twenty-one at this point. Both Brewster and Carmel, our neighbors, are discussing it. So I'm, I'm here tonight respectfully asking our board to put this on an agenda. And in the future, hopefully, draft a letter to the governor, you know, stating our desire to retain autonomy in this decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate the comments. That is it for the agenda. Right now, we're going to, oh, it's one more. I'm sorry, sorry.
Dawn Kelly.
There we go. All right. Sorry about that, Dawn.
Hi, my name is Dawn Kelly. I have a son in the high school, and I also have nieces and nephews of Boomer. And we actually have seen some display of the sound quality this evening, and I wanted to discuss the sound quality of the meetings as well as the videos. We all have very busy schedules. I make a point of coming here to these meetings because the sound is so bad when you try to listen to it live. I cannot get to the work sessions, but I do try to listen live. And I will tell you just even this past Tuesday, I couldn't hear anything. I had my volume completely up. So my ask is that we look at the quality of the microphones that we're using or the, the system in general. But I also ask that as board members, that you speak directly into the microphones, especially when you're doing your work session. I realize that you guys are talking amongst yourselves, but it is very frustrating when you are trying to listen in and you really can't hear anything. I mean, I actually got from the meeting when I was listening live, I thought you guys already had sixty members of this mascot committee already chosen. And I heard that an alumni communication went out, and I'm like, I'm an alumni. I never got any communication. You know, I asked my sister, you know, my sister, nobody else got alumni communication. So I, I know it seems like something simple as just speaking directly into the microphone and trying not to turn your faces when, when you're speaking with each other. I mean, maybe it's a lapel microphone instead, I'm not sure. But I just wanted to publicly, you know, ask that, that the board and the district look into the sound quality and the video quality for the meetings. I would also like to publicly put my support in for the veterans and that there is a specific vote. I know I said this personally to some board members, but I, I really do think as a, as a member of the community, there are certain things in the budget that I may not be okay with my money going to, but I can tell you one hundred percent that I would approve paying more individually so that a veteran did not have to pay anything at all, or a lot less. And so I just wanted to put in my support for that as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate all the comments. Okay, thank you, and I, I can't promise. We're going to try to do better on the, the sound. I mean, it's, it's a bit of a challenge here, and it's a bit of a challenge in the P D. room, but we'll try to do better. And obviously, if you are trying to pay attention, and you can't hear it, it is difficult. But I appreciate the comments. Thank you. Okay, anybody else?
No, that's it.
All right. I want to thank everybody who came here tonight. Hopefully, you, despite the comments that were just heard, hopefully, you got to hear us. We are here every month. We're, a lot of, a lot of activities going around the districts. If you have questions, you know, we want to have comments. Please send, people have been sending us emails, but we are, this Tony cannot be more available. She's available in the morning, noon, and night, right? In the morning? Yeah, right, all right, so. Yeah, nobody is more, yeah, accessible than her, so like be polite and nice. And with that, I'd like to call for a motion to move to an executive session to discuss personnel matter, please.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Enjoy the rest of the month, and I think happy Valentine's Day. See you on the happy.